Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting on Wednesday, October 1st, 2014. Can I have a roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
Present.
Daniel Hagan.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
J.P. Kuzinski.
Here.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Daniel Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Could we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice of all.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of September 17th?
So moved.
A motion of second for the approval of minutes of September 17th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Me.
One abstention. Okay. Public speak time, if there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council something other than what's on the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I am drafted. Hi, I'm Jim Valenhort. I just want to announce that the East Hampton Matters will be hosting a ballot question forum on Wednesday, October 29th at 6:30 PM, right here in council chambers. The League of Women Voters will be participating and we're going to be sending invitations to local candidates, so.
October 29th.
October 29th.
6:30.
6:30 PM. So again, for those interested, an interesting debate or discussion on the ballot questions for this November election, Wednesday, October 29th, 6:30 PM in these chambers. Sounds great, thank you. Communications for elected officials, boards of committees, council risk.
Yes, Mr. President, two items. First is an announcement of the Harvest Festival, October 18th at Nanotuck Park, 12 to 5 PM. This is a free event with free park entry, pumpkin carving contest, and other items. The Dan King Singers are also at the Rotary Club Pavilion from 2 to 4:30 PM. Secondly, we have an item, a request from the principal assessor to begin the FY 2015 tax classification process. This is an item for the finance committee and I therefore would move that it be sent to finance for review.
Second.
Motion of second to move the 2015 tax classification to finance, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. I see no additional correspondence. Mayor of Communications, Mayor Hager.
Good evening. Valerie Bernier, as you know, she's our city author, had asked that I hand out these reports. She got it. And this is the 2014 municipal school support. So, the City of East Hampton expended over $22 million in support of education for fiscal 14, excluding grants and school choice funds under direct control of the school committee. Total education spending increased by $833,958.44 over 2013, which is an increase of 6.54. So the rest of the report, I'll let you read on your own, but Valerie was really very happy to have this completed this early and had asked that I give it to the counselors tonight.
Any questions for the mayor? Counselors? Okay, thank you. I guess we can move on to standing committees, rules and government relations, council risk.
No report to safety.
Okay, finance, council Hagan.
Finance, our next meeting will be October 8th at 6:00 PM in room 1. At that time, we're going to try to have a detailed discussion on the review of elected salaries and other stipends that's been sitting on our agenda, and also we'll probably set a date at that meeting for when we'll bring the principal assessor in and discuss the classification, as council risk move to finance.
Okay, and you have no need for public hearings?
No need for public hearings.
Great.
That concludes.
Thank you. Public safety, counselor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we have been working on the street acceptance protocols and we have an initial draft done. It's going to be going out to the certain heads of different departments first, and what we're doing is, I'm just waiting to hear back from counselor Winnie to see if we want to have a meeting, one more meeting before it goes out to department heads, or if she's, she's fine with the edits that have been done. And this concludes.
Okay. Council risk.
I note that you have a public hearing continued for our next meeting. Do you think that will be ready?
I do.
Good, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, appointments, council Smith.
The appointment subcommittee met today at 5:45 to discuss and vote on the appointment of James Valenhort as an associate member to the planning board with a term expiring 12/31/17. We voted 2 to 0 in favor of that, so, sorry, would I move to have that, I'd like to have, move to have that voted on by the full council.
Second. Okay, a motion of second to accept James Valenhort assistant planning board, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Okay, and we are going to be having our next appointment subcommittee meeting on the 15th of October at 5:30, and I'd like to make a motion to forward the one mayoral appointment of Libby Reinisch to the appointment subcommittee for a planning board term which will expire on 12/31/16.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second to move the appointment of Libby Reinisch to the planning board to the appointment subcommittee. Any additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
And that concludes appointments.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance, council Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that I'd like to do tonight is announce that we are going to be having a joint public hearing with the planning board on October 14th at 6:00 PM to discuss the planning board's request to amend section 8.5 accessory apartments.
Okay.
That concludes.
Okay, thank you. Property, council Ziegler, please take your time.
Okay, well, I have no report from previous business, as there was nothing on the agenda. However, under new business, I was wondering if I might move the easement request for property located at the end of Mill Street to the property subcommittee?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the request for an easement at the end of Mill Street to property subcommittee. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Okay, and then additionally, I would like to, excuse me, set a public hearing to address the easement for Wednesday, October 15th at our next council meeting.
Second. Okay, a motion of second to set a public hearing associated with that same easement for the property at the end of Mill Street. Any additional discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And I would also like to announce then that our next property subcommittee will be October 8th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. And that's to address the easement. Okay.
Request of the property located at the end of Mill Street.
Okay, and? And that concludes?
That concludes.
Okay, and we have no older pending business, but we do have, because we have to take every, kind of, there's an election, there's a warrant, so I would, in the form of a motion, would like the city councils approve the warrant for the upcoming election on Tuesday, November 4th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The, those being elected are Senator, Congress, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer Auditor, Representative of Congress, Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, District Attorney, Register, Probate, and five ballot questions. So, in the form of a motion, I would like the city council's approval of that warrant of the election.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for the approval of the electoral warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. So, I would like to make, make a motion for a, 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 that's the word.
Recession.
Recession, thank you. Until 6:15 to begin the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion of second for recess till 6:15 PM, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? See you at 6:15.
Thank you.
Cell phone, anyway, has 6:15, so, I'll, okay, so, the meeting, we've now reopened. Before we begin, before I accept a motion to open public hearing, I would like to give an opportunity for Mr. Mason to come up and talk a little more about our Harvest Festival.
John Mason, Parks and Rec Director, thank you for the time, I'll be brief. Council risk mentioned it, we have our Harvest Fest, formerly the Pumpkin Fest, coming up Saturday, October 18th, from 12 to 5. We've added a lot of new things this year, we have a scarecrow competition, we have the Dan King Singers coming, we have a, the roaming railroad train rides through the park as well, we have pie baking, pie eating, vendors, all kinds of inflatables and stuff for the kids and games for the kids, which are all free. If anybody's interested in volunteering to help out that day, contact us at the park office and we'd love to have volunteers that day as well, so. If any of you have any questions, if not, I hope to see everybody on the 18th. Ragshag is the 28th, but I'll come back in two weeks and we'll talk about that more.
Great, thanks again for all your hard work on these.
Same, too.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to open the public hearings.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
A motion of second open public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain? Motion passive, public hearings are open. Council Hagan.
First public hearing tonight is a supplemental appropriation, and I'll do a second reading on it, dated August 28th, 2014, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, the amount requested is $13,418.45, and this would be appropriated from the water reserve fund in the amount of $4,030.15, and the sewer water, excuse me, sewer wastewater reserve fund in the amount of $9,388.30, for a total of $13,418.45, and it'd be appropriated to sewer salaries, $3,759.99, wastewater salaries, $5,628.31, and water salaries, $4,030.15, again, for a total of $13,418.45. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for DPW employees contract A and DPW supervisors contract B. This was approved unanimously by the finance committee. I know the mayor's here and probably would like to speak on it, and also maybe the office manager, Ms. Cotton, is also here, so whichever.
Well, as you know, it's contract A and B, so it's actually two union contracts that are here before you tonight. These are both for 1.5% increase, which is the funding that's here before you. I just wanted to point out one thing, actually, this is, I've been telling you, this is a new way that we do things, these are contracts that we sit down face to face together, we make sure, you know, I make sure that anybody involved in these, in these contracts is, is present or consulted, so to avoid any types of misunderstandings, miscommunications in the future. These contracts went smoother than smooth, and I also wanted to point out, and Patty Cotton, the office manager, is here tonight, but when looking at the funding, we decided to do the transfer group and both on the same transfer, I hope that was okay with the council, and what Patty actually did is, one of the, you know, some of the numbers are actually less than what the contract costs because she had figured out, you know, to her credit, figured out that there were monies that she would have left over in her personal services line because the department has been, you know, shorthanded. So, I thought that was very commendable, and to her credit, that instead of just figuring out, you know, what was needed for just the contract and requesting that amount, she actually wanted to, you know, put in extra thought, and I appreciate her efforts in only asking for what the department actually needed, so.
Ms. Cotton, would you like to say, speak anything, or?
Unless you have a question, I'm good.
Okay. Are there any questions for the mayor or office manager? Okay, thank you for your time, council Hagan. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, anyone from the public who would like to address the council concerning those, this appropriation? Okay, now, council Hagan.
You know, just one final comment, again, I echo what the mayor said about the, how it was pleasant to see a contract go smoothly in face to face negotiations with both the unions and the administration, and I think at least the committee was very, very happy with that, and also for Patty Cotton coming up with a little smaller figure based on some people down in the department, which they, I believe, are in the hiring process. Hopefully, hopefully. That's it at this time, I make a motion, if there's more of the thing, I make a motion that the council approve the amount of $13,418.45 to be appropriated from water reserve fund and sewer wastewater reserve fund in that amount, $13,418.45, and appropriated to the sewer salaries, water, excuse me, wastewater salaries and water salaries in the amount of $13,418 to fund the DPW employees contract A and DPW supervisors contract B.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second for the approval of that appropriation, additional comments, council risk.
Just a comment and forgive me, council Hagan, if you've already mentioned it, but this is simply an appropriation to cover this year's cost because we're already in the budget year, because this covers three fiscal years from July 1 through the next three years, and this and the fire contract appropriation which we have this evening simply covers us for not having appropriated these funds for this year.
Thank you. Okay, any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Council Hagan.
Second public hearing tonight is also a supplemental appropriation, in which I'll do a second reading, this one is dated September 11th, 2014, the request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, the amount requested is $23,797, and is to be appropriated from the stabilization fund in that amount, $23,797, and appropriated to the following, fire full-time regular, $12,980.75, fire incentive, $1,136.42, fire overtime pay, $1,890, fire overtime emergency, $85, fire overtime pay training, $45, fire sick leave incentive, $196.15, fire personal days, $747, ambulance overtime pay, $784.15, ambulance EMS incentive, $2,135.53, fire prior year retro, $3,406, and fire prior year retro, excuse me, ambulance prior year retro, $391, for a total of $23,797. The amount requested is for the following purpose, to fund the firefighters' local 1875 contract. Again, this was voted unanimously by the committee, and I know the mayor will speak on this one, or the fire chief, or both, I guess this one was a little different in terms of the figures per year, so.
Thank you, council Hagan. Yes, this one was a little different. Again, this was my extreme pleasure to have negotiated with the unions, and this negotiation was no attorneys, face to face with the fire union, and it involved myself, Chief Mutter, the personnel director, Jane Sakowitz, and Melissa Zwoski, our finance director. So again, anybody involved in the processing of this in any way, shape, or form was at the table and consulted. The chief definitely had some, you know, language things that he was interested in, but this one is a little different, as you mentioned, this contract is a 1, 1.5, 2. So doing it this way is actually very beneficial to the city. So the end result, when you're all said and done, you know, comes out to the same, the same 4.5, but by doing it staggered like that, it does definitely come to the city's advantage. So it was an extreme pleasure to be part of these negotiations, and I couldn't have even wished for anything to go smoother. This was two sessions.
Thank you very much. Chief Mutter, would you?
Well, I must have had, you pretty much covered it, but I do like to reiterate that it was a huge relief not dragging out negotiations for three years, not to mention the damage it does to morale, but when the last contract after three years, the cost, but the added workload to my 18-hour-per-week administrative assistant trying to figure out three years of retro with the finance director and the auditor, doing only two months makes it a lot more manageable, and in the end result, they ended up taking a 1% raise the first year, which makes it easier financially to operate the department. Unless anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much, chief. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the council concerning this appropriation, feel free to come to the podium. Okay, that's it, council Hagan.
Basically, again, it was favorable, I think, again, the finance committee was very pleased that this was taken care of, and again, like council risk said, this is three years going forward, with this amount just being from the beginning of July till now to cover that portion.
I just have one more thing. Mayor Hager.
Just one more thing, I actually really wanted to thank the finance subcommittee and the city council for really moving this one along this fast, both of these contract, both of these transfer requests that were put before you, but especially the fire one by setting the public hearing ahead of time and having it all set for this, it really, this was, it couldn't go any faster than that, so I really appreciate your timeliness on it, too.
Thank you. Council Hagan.
I'll make the following motion, that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation the amount of $23,797, and that it be appropriated in increments mentioned before to the following full-time regular, fire, fire incentive, fire overtime pay, fire overtime emergency, fire overtime pay training, fire sick leave incentive, fire personal days, ambulance overtime pay, ambulance EMS incentive, fire prior year retro, ambulance prior year retro, again, for the following purpose, to fund the firefighters' local 1876 contract.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation for the fire contract, fire department contract, amount of $20,797. Council risk.
There's two comments to make, first, as a huge compliment to the mayor and her administration, I remember in the spring when the other contract came through, I said I hoped that we could probably get a new negotiation system up that would avoid the lawyers. This has been done, and because of this, the city's capability of getting a contract done adds trust on both sides and reduces the cost of labor negotiation by a great deal, maybe $10,000 was spent on the last negotiation. To say that the fire contract was difficult in the past is an understatement. I am hugely impressed with how fast this has happened, and I compliment, there's no one here from the union, but chief, please pass on how I am thrilled. And, secondly, I know that there's been difficulty in the past with language regarding the healthcare systems and everything else, but this tells me that our, all of our employees care about the city and understand its financial constraints, and I appreciate them, and I wanted to say that in public and let our residents know, we should appreciate employees who are willing to take less because they know it's what the city can afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or, sorry, council Hagan, yeah, there's a motion of second, I believe. No, any more comments? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Okay, our third public hearing tonight is another supplemental appropriation, and I'll do a second reading, this one's dated August 26th, 2014, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, the amount requested is $256,000.0 dollars, no cents, excuse me, and appropriated from CPA historic preservation account in the amount of $88,265.91, and CPA undesignated fund account in the amount of $167,734.09, and appropriated to the old town hall improvements, in that amount, $256,000, and the amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to fund improvements to town hall for the recreation of the historically appropriate exterior doors, restoration of the first floor lobby and corridor, and rehabilitation of the restrooms. This particular matter, because I said it's a part of finance, I said on CPA, began, I believe, at least in front of CPA around the middle of June, the end of June, and there was a grant involved which came through from the state in the amount of, I believe it was, and I know some of the people are here that will speak to it, but I believe the grant was in the amount of $113,000, which will be, you know, funds that'll also be used in this project along with this appropriation. And after some, which, again, the CPA was, we held hearings and everyone's, I think was very favorable, when final numbers came in, given the historical nature of the doors and trying to do some of the architecture along the line of, and there's some photos I provided for the counselors of the windows that are going in and the doors, I think it'll be spectacular when it's completed. They did come back and need additional funding to complete the project. At the time, out of CPA, it did pass with all in favor with one extent, the extension, which was myself, and the only reason I wanted to abstain at that time is I felt we needed one more meeting to really go over the numbers, but we took our time in finance, and I think both the other councilors certainly can speak for themselves, but I think we took the time to go over the numbers and make sure everything was as, as we thought it should be, and also to kind of get a little more assurance on, as I said, these doors are somewhat pricey given their historical nature, so we wanted to make sure, and everyone was very cooperative, and how we could protect the doors by bringing in coverings and that during certain events, so no damage would be done to them. So, it did pass the committee at a 3-0 positive vote, and at this time, if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to call probably Mr. Ed Check, and you can kind of go through the project for us a little.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. I know some of you, but I wanted you to connect a face to a name. My name is Ed Check, I am the president of City Space, and City Space is a nonprofit organization that started in 2006, and was at the point where the city offices were moving to the municipal building, and town hall became available, and we proposed a, an application that suggested to put all of the different arts organizations that were scattered around the city in different places under one roof, and this is what City Space's mission is. We manage the building and we're bringing all of the different artwork organizations under it. We currently have East Hampton City Arts, we have the East Hampton Cultural Council, Flywheel Arts Collective, and Big Frame Custom Training, who also has a Lucy Gallery attached to it. And at the time, we started off with just the first floor, and we've put a lot of effort into knocking down a lot of the small offices so we could have a performance space in the back, we have a wonderful office and gallery for East Hampton City Arts and a Lucy Gallery. So, as we, going fast forward, you know, we are, I have always been attracted, why I started this nonprofit is, one, I saw this incredible room upstairs on the second floor, and I always found it a shame that it wasn't being used. It's a spectacular room, and the reason it's not being used are because of several fire codes and, I want to say, handicap or disability restrictions. So, that got us to form a board for City Space, and we started to apply for grants and to see what we could come up with, and this is what we've been doing for the last, you know, seven to eight years. We had great luck this past year, 2014 has been terrific, because we found out, we did, we were granted, it was $133,000 for a Massachusetts tourism grant, and as we looked at our sort of bucket list of what we wanted to, to do in the building, one thing that happened a couple of years ago is we really wanted to light the towers, that, you know, that if you've noticed now, the towers light at night and it's pretty spectacular, and I've noticed that the church across the street has now lit their towers, and that the church next door, the children's center, has painted their towers, so I feel like they're keeping up with us. And, so, so, the next, as we move forward, the next logical step was now to look at the lobby. I don't know if any of you have been in the lobby recently in Old Town Hall, but it's, it needs help. It's very tired, and has gone through a lot of older demolitions and renovations from the 50s and 60s that are just so outdated at this point, and so worn that it looks pretty bad. The restrooms in the lobby are also just embarrassing, considering that they are, you know, this is a public building, and this is how we represent, you know, represent ourselves to the, to the public. So, when we, we're thinking about what we wanted to apply for, and then once we received this grant from the Massachusetts tourism grant, the next, the next step was, well, why don't we try to remodel and, and restore the lobby to what its grandeur may have been when it was built in 18, I want to say?
69.
What is it?
69.
69, 69. And we started to do a lot of research about that and what the original doors were and the lighting and so forth, gaslighting, and, and it was obvious that the, that the renovation that we wanted, 130 And it was obvious that the renovation that we wanted, $133,000 would not be enough. And so then we decided to approach the CPA and ask them for additional money so we could, if we're, if we're going to go through all of the trouble of really doing a major renovation in the lobby, which is a lot of work because of abatements and paint and lead and everything's so old in that building, that why don't we just go for the entire project and see what it costs? We hired an architect, we've been working with an architect for about a month now, maybe longer, and the numbers started coming in and to our surprise, they were, they were quite high. But that's why, you know, I've been in front of the CPA twice, I've been, and then it got handed to the finance committee and I've met with both Dan and JP to review, you know, what we wanted to do and show them the accounting for City Space and, and I know JP has a lot of those records. And so I'm here just to say that this is a really important project to us. The money is to renovate the lobby and specifically because the lobby connects us now to what our next phase will be, is to get upstairs. And in the future, that's the next round of grant writing. There are so many grants out there that we are eligible for, for as a 501(c)(3) that, that, you know, we're trying to decide which ones to apply for, what are the chances that we get them, and we think that if we can get this lobby renovation done, then we can invite people to this building and say, look at what we've done so far. And that's sort of the initiative behind it. So I, I hope you will consider this request. We're all very passionate about the arts in East Hampton. We are a volunteer board, we just volunteer our time and if I can answer any questions, I will.
Any additional questions from Councilor Hayes?
Mr. Check, the, is everything applicable for CPA funds, including rehabilitation of the restrooms?
Yes, if I'm understanding your, your question. Everything is included. Between the two grants, the 133 from the tourism grants plus the 256, that's the total for everything we want to do.
So if I, I think, maybe Councilor Hagan?
Yes, I think in the assistant planners, you know, also if there's questions specific to CPA funding, but I believe because the building is historic in nature.
So anything?
Anything pretty much can be, can be, come under that umbrella, you know, not ongoing maintenance necessarily, but any renovations of that type. So that would be, because the whole building itself is historic, so therefore.
And that, and that, you know, was challenging in the beginning because it is a historic building that's under the historical commission.
Right.
And so you can't just put up any doors, you know. How the existing doors ever got put up, I don't know. I guess the Massachusetts Historical Commission came later, but, but we had to, we had to send them, you know, our research and what our proposal was to get their approval. And they are, they're custom doors, they have to be custom made.
No, it looks great.
Any additional comments?
Just one, sir. I just wanted to say, I took yourself, you were nice in Burns twice, I went and viewed it and I will just wanted to reaffirm how deplorable the bathrooms are and also the paint, you know, the old tin ceilings in there and the paint's peeling off it and it's just, I think it's a, you know, it's really an eyesore where I know a lot of stuff, especially that happens on the green, you know, when they have things on the green, whether it's the, those are the only restrooms that are to the public and it really, I think this will show a little nicer face for the city.
Absolutely. And what we've discovered is this, the East Hampton community and outside of the East Hampton community is so passionate about this building. It's our gem, the, it's a beautiful building with the towers and we just, you know, we want to even spotlight it some more.
One of the comments.
We also got, I think we're all said it.
Okay.
And we did also get the letters, I know Marsha's in the audit, she sent a letter supporting it and also the state senator, state representative were supportive of the private.
If there's anyone else who would like to address the council concerning this appropriation, please come to the podium, is that your name?
Hi, I'm Marsha Morrison, 24 Winter Street, and I'm also a member of City Space and, excuse me for my cold. I just wanted to add just two short things. One is, I just flew in from Barcelona last night and as I looked at the weather report on the front page of the Yahoo Weather Report in East Hampton is the Old Town Hall. So it's clearly somebody out there thinks it's the icon for East Hampton and I think they're absolutely right. But the other thing I wanted to mention is, this was a grant that was not only for historical preservation buildings, but also for tourism. And the fact that we got $133,000 tells you what's been happening over there in that building for the last, I don't know how many years it's been. We have made an impact on the economy in terms of the people that have been in that building, what's been offered in that building, and somebody else believed us to, to the amount of $133,000. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else from the public who would like to address this appropriation of the council, free, please feel free to come forward. Counselor Rist?
Before we have a motion, I have a question for either Assistant Planner Webb or Finance Director Zawinski regarding the balance on the CPA fund after all of these projects are, if you can let the council know what that figure is, I didn't want to quote it, I think it was 1.5 million, am I accurate with that?
So after the, currently the total balance is about 1.7 million if you add up all the different.
That's after these are done?
That's before. So after this appropriation, the total would be?
1.4 something?
I'm sorry, excuse me. After this appropriation, it would be 1.7 million.
After this?
Yes. With, before this appropriation, it's at about just under 2 million.
Wow. Okay. Thank you. I needed that figure for a comment I'm going to make later.
Okay, any questions from the council before a motion? Okay, Councilor Hagan.
I'll make the following motion, that the full city council approve the following supplemental appropriation. The amount requested would be $256,000 and it would be appropriated from historic preservation, $88,265.91 and CPA undesignated, $167,734.09 for a total of 256 and appropriated to the old town hall improvements in that amount, $256,000, to be used for funds to improve town hall for recreation of historically appropriate exterior doors, restoration of the first floor lobby corridor and rehabilitation of the restrooms.
Second? Motion and a second for supplemental appropriation of 256,000 from CPA for improvements to Old Town Hall. Additional comments?
Counselor Kozinski.
I certainly like to always see that we're having some additional state funds be used for projects. It's terrific that we're getting a tourism grant. I think that speaks to the communities being, being able to support, are being able to support businesses in our community and the bringing of additional people to our community, not only for the city space, spaces, the folks who occupy city space, but the rest of our community. This, to me, is a real home run for East Hampton. It's an historic structure. We own it. We get to fix it up with these funds. It's exciting. I had questions about City Space because I didn't know that they were an all-volunteer board. I found that out and to have a group of people committed to our buildings and our community, our arts, it's really, it's really pretty dramatic and I think East Hampton is very special because of this and I certainly would like to support this wholeheartedly. I took the tour, it's embarrassing beyond embarrassing, the bathrooms, they're not just embarrassing, it's beyond embarrassing. And that these are spaces that can be used by the community, that's really important for other events, not only the events in the building, but events in the community in downtown. We have another resource, an income stream from this building, the Verizon Wireless Tower that's there. It's important for us to keep the support to the building, to make sure that building continues to grow, just to support that income stream. There are a variety of good reasons to support this project and so I'm 100% behind this. And I do think this is a great step toward bringing in other people to look at what we're going to do so that we can do, get to work on the second floor because that is a beautiful space.
Counselor Rist?
Yes, I'd like to echo Counselor Kozinski's comments. I wanted to make sure the public knew, I know we all know this, these funds, we just spent 330-something on a football field from CPA funding, we're spending $256,000. That's a lot of money and our community, probably most of them are educated to what the CPA can be used for, but I wanted to reiterate it. It can only be used for three areas, affordable housing, open space and recreation, and historic preservation. We can't use these funds to fix the roads or fund the schools or do anything else. And thank God, we have the CPA. I just got my tax bill today, I noticed I pay $33 a quarter and that's not much to spend considering we have 1.7 million after we spend all the money in the bank to be used for these projects. Without the CPA, none of this could happen. We couldn't fix football fields, we couldn't build anything, we couldn't preserve open space, and we certainly couldn't fix this gem of a building. Thank God we have it, thank God that, I have to compliment City Space and Mr. Check and everybody involved in Burns Maxi for getting a project like this fully documented and beautifully presented. The CPA, how could they turn you down? It's beautiful. Plus, you fought hard to get a grant and they're always in favor, as Counselor Kozinski said, when a grant is coming from the state, let's get the funding to fix it. And it's a gem of a building. It's our historic building, it's the historic building and I hope we will move faster, even faster, to get the upper floors done because when that's renovated, when it becomes a performance space, it'll support lots of activity, which will bring more business activity into the community and that building will finally be done the way it should be. With this kind of money in the bank and the CPA, I know there's other projects out there, but I have no problem spending 300, 400,000 at a crack to get this stuff done. Otherwise, it just sits there and it may gain interest, but can't be used for anything else. So thank you. Thank you for doing this work and I certainly, as a performance artist myself, I appreciate it. But as Counselor Kozinski said, it's not just the arts, it's tourism. They come in and they see a beautiful historic building, now with a beautiful lobby.
And nice bathrooms. Thank you. Any additional comments? Counselor Derby?
Just really quick, I'll be brief. You know, I remember going to my first subcommittee meetings in that building.
Okay.
And it was, you know, it's really great to see the transformation that it's making and I think this is just a super positive thing for the community and it's not only the face of East Hampton on the Yahoo Weather page, but it is, if you look down to our papers, it's on our seal and it's dead center. And so protecting, protecting that important building and, and bringing it up. I agree with Dan 100%, I can't wait to see it upstairs being used. So more power to you. Thanks.
Just a quick thing to add to a little what Counselor Rist said about the CPA money too, the $33 he's paying, the state does match some of that too, Dan.
Well, yeah, but I'm happy.
Which has been good, that's what I'm trying to say to the taxpayer, it's what we pay also, the state matches, it used to be 100%, but it's, and it's gone down, but they still do give us a match because we do fund the CPA out of the tax. So we do get a match from the state every time we pay our bills.
Outstanding opportunity for us to improve our city. So I'm glad, so glad we had the foresight early on to think of enrolling in this. It's helped us quite a bit. Any additional comments, questions? Counselor Hagan.
I already made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been so long. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Yay.
Yes, okay, I believe we still have?
Still have one more.
One more public hearing. Ordinance, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have in front of us tonight is something the ordinance subcommittee discovered as we were looking at new taxi businesses coming to town. As we went through our ordinance and looking at the requirements that we held for taxis that were coming to East Hampton, specifically insurance requirements, we found that East Hampton was a bit of an anomaly as it came to the requirements for insurance that taxi companies had to hold on their vehicles. And so in the current ordinance, we require a 250,000 liability for a catastrophic accident, 250,000 for a single, 500,000 for more than one person involved. And what we found was that every other surrounding community had a much lower threshold. And when we dug into it, we found that basically it's, it's quite a large jump in cost from the 100,000, 300,000, which is basically all surrounding communities have, including North Hampton, Amherst, Holyoke, for their taxi requirement to what we had, which was 250, 500,000. The applicant that came to us said, when they checked with their insurance company, they were quoted $2,000 per vehicle. So what we decided to do was, we decided to try to bring the insurance requirements for a taxicab specifically in line with other towns in the community. So we weren't pricing people out of East Hampton if they wanted to do business here, if they wanted to register, do the right thing and register their taxicabs in East Hampton where they were going to be doing business. And so that's where this came to us tonight. So I'd be happy to take any questions or?
Oh, Mr. Check, is the mayor, finance director, anyone would like to comment on this change in? Okay. Any questions or comments for the Counselor Derby concerning these changes?
Okay. I will say before I make a motion that the ordinance subcommittee did vote three to zero to approve this change. I did, I do want to, just full disclosure, I want to say I'd received one call from a citizen who was concerned about the change, specifically thinking that, you know, people that are riding in taxis might not have the means and, and if they are involved in an accident and they don't have the ability to litigate, then, you know, this might be taking something away. And they also mentioned the Department of Public Utilities regulating transportation. I did some digging on that and I found that the DPU, Department of Public Utilities, does regulate transportation in relation to vehicles of, that carry nine people or more, like buses and larger vehicles, trucks, and they do require, they're basically regulated by the state, not by municipalities at that point. And at this point, taxicabs are regulated by municipalities and not by the state. So I felt comfortable with going ahead with this.
Okay. So before you, I was amiss to not offer to the public, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council concerning this before a motion is made? Please come forward. Okay, thank you. Counselor Derby?
I move to amend the city ordinances, chapter nine, vehicles for hire, article one, taxicabs, section nine, five, business owner's permit, subsection E as follows, by changing the words and numbers 250,000 to 100,000 and 500,000 to 300,000.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend chapter nine, vehicles for hire, article one, section nine, five, by changing the insurance requirements from 250 to 100,000, 500,000 to 300,000. Any additional comments or discussion? Okay. Well, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, saying?
Aren't you happy I didn't have anything to say?
I know, I just said there must be someone to say something. Okay, so motion passes.
Move.
Okay.
Second. We have a motion and a second and close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
One of, I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, see you in a couple of weeks, thank you.
We have to sign all these things.